Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. Did I see you just call the roll, please?
Moore?
Yeah.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Here.
Engstrom? Engelhardt?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the pledge allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four is perfection and approval of the agenda as it is with the minister. Motion for that, please.
So move.
Larry, second? Becky? All those in favor say aye?
Alright.
Who said no? Carrie? Item five, the public comment time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paula Inyard and I manage the Postal Farmers Market. And this year, Northeast Iowa Telephone is going to co-host with us a night called Megabytes of Flavor. And so, there will be vendors there that will have different foods to taste, plus some food trucks. Currently have around ten vendors that are gonna be there, but I just wanted to let you know what was going on. And if it goes well, that they would like to do it again next year and kind of hoping to bring back that taste of.
It's gonna be at the fairground.
And it's gonna be at the fairground. So I'll just give you all an invitation. You know, Dan?
Thanks.
Yes. Hope to see you there.
Hey, look at that. I flipped that and it didn't hardly run through. Alright, Jason, try not to.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jason Gearhart. I'm your state representative. And I just want to come introduce myself to you guys tonight, so you can feel like a face of the name. And just wanted to let you know, as we work for next year, our legislative stuff we're gonna do, one of the big things is property taxes. So I left a business card for all of you, so when we get talking property taxes, if you guys see issues, you need to let me know, so I can let other people know. Because like I was telling your mayor before the meeting, you know, big cities like Des Moines, here at Buke, they have their own lobbyists. You guys don't, you have me. So I'm an ally. I'll try to advocate as best I can for, you know, our small rural communities. And again, I just wanted to come and say hi and look forward to working with you guys next session and get back to the volleyball game here, so.
Alright.
And you are from where?
I live in Chover Point, yeah.
So this property tax rollback is great for the property tax people. The city kind of gets hung high and dry.
And that's why I.
What are you gonna solve? How are you gonna solve that?
So, there is no legislation ready yet. So I don't know. That's why I'm relying on you guys when the new bill comes out, to let us, to let me know, to let, well, let me know, so I can let them know if it's gonna hurt.
Some kind of sales, I don't know.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure you, you understand that problem, because you know, property taxes are actually going up. And when you take a look at us.
Assessment.
The assessment, yes, exactly. And then, you know, we, so we've, we've received less money. So it's like, I can understand it's a vote getter, but that doesn't help us, our situation very well.
And that's why I'm here. I'm here to help advocate for you guys, so if you see issues with it, let me know. I'll pass the word along. I'm one of a hundred, so.
Am I right that consumption tax, like sales tax, for people who, I think, a lot of people have felt that was fairer? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, you know. The word of sales tax, how does that all get divvied up now? If you call it sales tax, I'm not sure what else you call it. You know?
I don't raise sales tax, it requires a constitutional amendment, so I don't know.
To raise it?
Hmm.
Okay. What other tax things can you call it? Rather, you know, rather than you have your school bond taxes, uh, your school, you know, I don't know. I'm not sure what you call it.
Sure.
We need help. That's it.
Okay.
Forgot what to call it.
We'll figure it out.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, no, not really bad, but.
Oh, yeah.
Cities are always broke, and now we're getting more broke because of the rollback of the.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have all the answers.
No, but.
Too proud to say it, but uh, I'm not on the committees that work on this, so like, when they get the bill written, that's when I can get it to review, so. It won't be till the first of the year.
Right.
So. Anyway, thank you all.
Thanks, thanks.
You guys have any questions?
Good, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Everybody? Alright, let's go on to item six then, uh, police charger. This is the, uh, car that we had put up for sale before, and then the motor went bad. And so, we went ahead and put in a new motor, so now, uh, we, and it was under your request to sell it. So I think we're looking, if you guys have got any idea, like, for a minimum bid?
Well, before you start off with that, let me give you a little bit of input. So, there is, I, I got an email from an individual out of Winchey County, who's a deputy. They have, or it's, it got sold to this individual's son. And it was.
What, a, a car that the police had?
Yep.
Okay.
It was a sheriff's office squad car, and it was a K-9 vehicle, back in the day. This one is a 2014 Dodge Charger, exact same as what we got, other than year. Um, our Charger we have is 2018. This 2014 has 181,500 miles on it. They're asking 4,500. Our 2018 has 100,000 miles on it. That's where we're sitting at. I mean, it's the police interceptor, V8, all-wheel drive, exact same thing, just the years are different. But that, just for, for the council to go off of, go by, you know, you got a four-year-old vehicle, four years older, and they're asking 4,500, so.
Have you got a recommendation?
I, I know, when we first were gonna try to sell this Charger, what do we have? We got, we started with that, was it 13 or 14?
I thought it was 14.
14, and there was no takers.
This has a new engine and another.
Right.
That should mean something.
It's new or it's rebuilt? It's new.
It's new.
It should, but uh, we've just, we put our personal vehicle, we put a new motor in it in February, and then we, I ended up hitting a deer. And it, they said it was totaled, and I said, no, it wasn't, and they only gave us $600 for the motor. And it was a $5,000 motor.
Wow.
So, but, no, yeah, it's a new motor and everything on, on ours, on the Charger that we have, so. And we started at 14, that was, was that last fall? Or was it last in the winter? I don't remember.
It's back in January.
Jan, yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, you got one that's four years older, and they're, they're asking 45, so with high, more mileage.
Is there such thing as a blue book? Want something like that?
Hard to get blue book on with the police vehicles.
Oh, true.
So.
It's got like, um.
But this.
81,000 less miles on ours.
Right.
A new engine.
Right.
Think we could get eight out of it?
Uh, yeah, I was saying, you know, 10, maybe?
Certainly, if you take the police equipment out of the.
Is the police equipment out of it yet?
No, it will, or, the, the radio's out, the computer is out. What needs to come out is the rest of it, the rest of the cage. Um, the light bar and the radar.
This might seem crazy, but what would be wrong with using it for another couple of years to buy some time? There's too many other things going wrong with it. You're not trying to get your money's worth out of this, out of this border.
Well, PD-wise, we could use it, and the city could use it, for running back and forth on different, if you want to do that, run back and forth and stuff. But to get it back into service means I'd have to go purchase another, um, computer, um, camera system, um, radio, did I say radio? Well, radio, another radio, because we took the radio out of that one and put it into, uh, which vehicle did we put that one into? One of the ones, just recent ones, but yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how to lessen the sting of the new motor, you know?
Yeah, right, no.
Drive it awhile.
Right. No, I mean, that was, I know we discussed it, that was an option that, you know, the city workers could use it. The PD could use it just for non-emergency stuff, just to run errands with the back and forth.
Color is it?
It's white. You'd have to take the striking off, which wouldn't be much.
If using it now, two years will appreciate it even more, if it has a brand-new engine.
Look good in that, Paul. You did about 15 kilos on that.
Get somewhere fast.
Better than my van. Better than my van. Spring it on him.
Well, you can always offer it for sale and reject bids.
Yes.
So you don't even have to set a minimum, you can just see what you get. Oh, yeah, we will.
And all these things that auction in big cities, you know, is that good or probably, is that just a last resort?
I, by the way, I really don't know. I've never had to send a vehicle, have some other, like, department buy back a vehicle from us, other than, uh, when did we trade it? Oh, for the truck. Torkelson's, we traded in that white truck for the gray truck. And then, Fayette County ended up buying that white truck off Torkelson's, and I don't know, it was like maybe a month or two later.
For the lease work?
Yeah. They were running, that was when, at that time, the fleet was, you hardly, could hardly get vehicles, so they were struggling, so they bought that truck, and it lasted three months. Be, then the motor.
It was a little over five.
You should call Kevin Moore, too, he thinks that he'd work.
It, I don't. Yeah, he was, but, yeah, but.
No, he's fixing more now.
Right.
He's fixing, he's still got, he's fixing.
Um.
He's a project.
I don't know if he'd want to get into the project that was a, that was a police vehicle. But.
So, and the interiors, are they torn seats and stuff like that?
Not, on the, on this one, the, the, they're leather seats, so they're in pretty good shape still. I don't think any of the dogs chewed them up, unlike this one. On this car, their, the driver's side seat was chewed up, they had to replace that because of their dog.
Shouldn't you remove the cages for doing Rule 92 here?
Nope. We, for right now, we just took the half of the cage out, because we, before it was for the K-9, but we took that platform out. And put the backseat back in it, so we could still transport, but the front cage is there, but it wouldn't take much to, yeah. And the cages, there's nothing, I mean, the cage would be basically sent to, for scrap. There's no other departments gonna be able to use the cage, because they don't make Chargers anymore for police vehicles.
Pay, man, I'm betting 10,000. I could be in motion.
Yeah.
Yep.
I move the week, put a man on bed of 10,000 on Charger.
One second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who said no? Carrie, okay. Item seven then is bids for security cameras for City Hall. I think you guys have all had those in your packet.
Um, so I did give you a copy of the covenant, and the reason why I gave that to you is that is our current system, and it's, um, the licensing is up for renewal. So if you choose not to replace the system we have, you'll have to re, approve the renewal. Otherwise, the law enforcement will not be able to access those cameras for the software. That's why you have that in your packet, okay?
So, we currently have all those cameras that sit up and down the streets, as that display shows?
Yeah.
So, we're, why are we, why are we getting new?
Uh, because the covenant cameras are extremely difficult, um, the, they're not clear camera system, and they're extremely difficult to use. I'll let Matt talk about that. It's not very user-friendly whatsoever.
Yeah.
Is that, is that this company here?
Yes.
Convergent? That's what we have now.
When would what?
When would these install?
I'd say like 18?
I liked.
It's been a while.
Yeah, they were, I want to say before my time, well, was it the same system in 17, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so 17 at least.
So if we, when is the renewal up?
It's up.
Oh.
So right now, if we had an incident, that we wouldn't be able to access, because I haven't paid the renewal. Yeah, I would like to get something that's better quality, user-friendly, um.
Have they changed their camera?
Well, didn't they originally start off with a guy from Lansing that installed them, and then he went out of business, is that the way it works?
No, originally, we had Indicom install cameras, and then he was no, wouldn't respond to us. So then, we were struggling to find a camera system, so we got this company from Fidelity Bank, because that's who they use. So, they're more popular in financial institutions, so not really cities. Sure, I just won't pay the.
We don't just don't pay them.
Yeah, we go with.
These aren't very good. I'd suggest we go to somewhere else.
Yeah, I would.
Is any of the existing cabling conduit?
Have you, oh, you look on my floor, floor there and tell me if you think we should reuse that mess. Right, it's a disaster.
I, what I referred to is like the outside.
Yeah.
Is, is any of that reusable, or is it gotta be updated cables and?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, updated the whole thing.
And is the current one needing to be updated as well? New wiring to update? And the, the bodies of the cameras themselves?
Yeah, it'll all be new.
Even with the renewal?
With the renewal, no. It would just be what's there, and just paying software, the software license. Basically, it's the licensing fee.
So it's no new equipment, it's just a renewal.
It's just a licensing fee, yeah.
And wiring?
Bottom line on that tele, five-star telecom is 22, two, 22 grand. And then one.
But then on the, on the five-star telecom two, then it's 6,050 years, so you need that vice.
And I just, and the Wire Pro, I forgot what they include.
What, what do you, you've looked these over yourself? I mean, what do you guys have any recommendations when you look these books over?
Um, I think for us, we were fine with Wire Pro or the five-star, but like Devora said, there's still licensing fee. Five-star is what Postal School has. So, Postal School has, so that's how we connected with them. And then the Raycom is what Hall Roberts has. That's how we connected with them.
I think we should go with Wire Pro. We're moving, making a motion.
Motion, yeah.
I'm moving that we go to Wire Pro for our security system.
Hey, here a second.
One second.
Larry?
Your discussion.
Your discussion.
The, the, Wire Pro has no, uh, this other company, five-star, they have every five years, they have a $6,000 fee?
Yeah, it's a licensing fee.
Okay, but what does Wire Pro have for a license?
They don't. No subscription fee.
Okay. Because Wire Pro is part of a bigger fish, bigger company, we don't understand why the licensing fee is even in there.
Well, I suppose you're paying for.
Tech support?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I imagine, you bet, yeah.
Okay.
The other discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who said no? Alright, with that done?
She did.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, item eight then, Paula.
Paula, Paula, Paula.
Do the, oh, I can't, you can't do that, geez.
Hey, everyone. Paula, you're a partner rep.
A what?
Alrighty, so I'm the partner rep, we've been busy, um, we've been doing our fundraiser, we should lay down a statement. And, um, so, you know, trying to keep improving our parks and, and, um, so one of the, one of the things that we wanted to present to the council was bringing back the ice skating rink. Um, so, I'm not for sure, insurance purposes, um, how.
I called on that today. I called on that today.
Okay.
Um, so they said it would be $100 a year on the liability, and that if they chose to go with an ice skating rink, that we would have to have a conversation with loss control, so that we were, um, educated on on the liability of it, which is normal for workers' comp and stuff, so.
So, um, just bringing it to the council, your thoughts, um, if you guys think that would be okay?
Where would you put it?
In the parking lot by the pool, where it originally had been.
For the basketball.
The basketball hoop.
So, and that before the winter will be a nice, correct, the basketball.
And the pickleball courts.
And the pickleball.
It hasn't been resurfaced yet, um, but it will be, um, and then that will serve as the pickleball court in summer. That was part of our grant that we did.
What's that gonna work though, having an ice skate, putting water on all that, freezing it, and then all the that damaged the course?
They put a liner down.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Um.
It's just, it's like West Union, they put a liner down, then they have, I think West Union has, uh, sandbags all the way around it, stacked up.
Actually, like, so the salvage bags that we put up in your farms, and we'll probably donate one of them to make the walls of it. On ice skating rink. So, um.
Would you have a place that rents out the ice skates, or everyone brings their own?
Everyone could bring their own.
So it's not like a concession stand or something, and we rent out the skate?
It's just like a, where's the skate?
That's what I'm saying.
We might do a little concession stand of hot chocolate.
I was gonna say, do you do like a little hot house or anything?
Yeah.
Or lorry house?
Have a little house.
Okay, when I was growing up, we used to go backwards, probably now where the, um, bus barn is, we used to go out skating there. It would just freeze over.
Sure. So, we wanted to come to you guys first, see what you think, and then of course, talk about it, and try to make it happen for our town.
The one of the things that was on the, we're postal, that's what we did.
I'm not for sure, but with that, I'm not too sure.
Crystal said no.
No. So, um, just kind of a little update, um, as you know, we are doing updates to the park with um, new playground equipment, and just so you know, like, we're not raising hundreds of thousands of dollars. We are putting in, like, new swings in existing, in the existing swing sets. We are gonna add a new playground area, um, but we are using what we have, updating what we have. Um, and, like, the teeter totters will be taken out. Um, so, there's been a lot of talk, like, oh, you know, we're gonna raise three, four hundred thousand dollars. We're not gonna be raising that kind of money.
One more question, um, if you're gonna have a new playground, in a different area, you mean, or just?
Yeah, like, over by the walking trail, um, and that area, we're gonna update some of that. Um, it would be the east side of the park. We'll get the updates where the older equipment is.
I hate to see that, having children playing around there when it's kind of a nice place to walk.
Well, that's something, yeah, I think you as a council too, need to kind of consider updating the walking trails, um, in that area as well, in the future. Um, that Grand Meadows Glen, I just planted a three-acre wildflower field, and I have a walking path through it, or a side-by-side path through there, um, that would connect easily to the walking trail, um, but that would be another area that would be, could see some improvement in the future, too.
Will you make your path for side-by-sides?
Mm-hmm.
Good choice. Um, one thing that's kind of popular in colleges and young people is hockey takes a lot of skill. You know, skating, and you remember the puck and all that stuff, and pucks go fast, and, uh, that's how injuries happen. I've been, like, going, murder. But, broom ball, the broom ball is something you could institute through the YMCA, or not YMCA, but the, you know.
Sure, broom ball?
Broom ball, instead of hockey sticks, they use a ball that's maybe like a volleyball, and they, they move it down the floor with brooms. And you have a goal, just like, you know, it's a rage in college, because you don't have to have the skill set that you do for hockey.
Should be easier on the teeth, too.
What?
Should be easier on the teeth?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you just.
Yeah, that might be what I'm gonna get talked about.
I don't know if you incorporate that with the wellness center, to get some kind of leagues going, or, uh, you know.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I mean, we're always looking for new things for our town, and, and, you know, obviously with this housing project coming up in the near future here, you know, you want to attract people to your town, and parks, parks are a big part of it, and, um, and we've asked some couples in our town that are very active, you know, what would you like to see, um, and they've gave us some great suggestions and so forth, so, um, so we're just trying to bring back the ice skating rink, and, and that's about in, in use.
Yep.
Was it popular when it was up in the past?
I believe it was.
It was, yeah.
So was it that meal that they had at the pool, was that a fundraiser for that?
Not for that, that was for the playground equipment.
Oh, for the playground? How much did they make for that?
Around $1,700. So we'll keep doing stuff for that as well, like just adding more things. Anyway, just wondering about the council's thoughts around the ice skating rink and, um, insurance purposes, of course.
I think it's, I personally think it's a good thing. Anything you could do to keep kids busy doing things and get the adults maybe.
And the dismounts must be coming back, too, because I've talked to some couples that travel to different towns, but they just go up, and they're like, oh, you know, postal has it, so.
I've seen people out there in the park.
So one thing we really need, need to do is ramp up our Facebook page, um, and keep what we have, what's going on our, on our internal, on that page, so people know.
Paula, if they don't have skates, how would they do it anyway? We'd jump them out.
No, not the first year.
That's why broom ball is so popular.
Because you don't need.
You don't need skates, you're just on your snowshoes, your shoes, and your boots. And people got brooms. Now, anybody knows how to use a broom anymore?
That's true.
They, they broom a ball. That little broom goes moving the ball down.
We need to go back and ask, I think this option of a camera.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ask.
Okay, okay. We'll revisit that.
Because you don't have to have a skill set, you don't have to have ice skates.
True.
You don't have to have hockey, you don't have to have pucks.
You're gonna go back to this.
Okay. Yeah, we surely can check into that, too. That would be fun. Because we have, like, the sacrament, so we can put there.
That's what would be your goal, yeah.
You might have to educate the kids, a lot of our kids don't know what it is.
True, and maybe that's something I'm working with the school, maybe the kids could come down and, and do it, too.
They can get ready for broom ball on grass, to be honest with you, you know?
Oh, sure.
Just so when you put ice, and you're not, you know, about, uh, slippery, you know? But, um. Right?
Alrighty, well, anyway.
So, Paula's asking you if you think it's a good idea.
I'll, I'll move that we.
I don't know if we need to go in.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea for a hundred bucks.
A motion to approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Alright, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Who said no, okay, with that done. Thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back to the, uh, security cameras. Um, there was an option on there for a, a traffic intersection camera option. We're down here, I believe it's at the four-way, right? Yeah, I know, so, uh, and that was an additional, additional $3,600 to $4,200, depending on the configuration, so. We, this is, this isn't for traffic.
Oh.
This is just for law enforcement. This is just for law enforcement.
Yes.
That's included in there?
No, it's not included in there.
That would be an addition.
That's why I brought it back. Is because this is, this is something that is additional to that.
They were in an accident.
I don't think so.
No, we didn't, we didn't. But it was something I talked with Casey about as an option. In being, he was the low bid, I'm just wanting to see if that's something you want.
That's good.
But, see, there's a difference.
Where would it be?
Well, that's a good question.
Well, and wire probably haven't.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we'd have to go back.
Yeah, so we would maybe talk to Jalapeno, he'd probably be the most willing. And it would be remote, so.
In our initial vote, we did not improve the other camera.
Because that's, that's not in that figure.
The other company didn't have it in there.
Nope.
So, compared to the others.
Just, we're giving you, you know, it's on the quote when you look there. And, but that's not what you voted for, okay?
And so, we need to amend our vote.
If you want, you don't have to.
With, with what that camera picks up, what is your ability to utilize what you, is it, and is it recorded or is it only live?
I'm assuming it's only live, and the only way that we would be aware of it is if someone reports it and says, hey, this vehicle or in the stop sign, then we'd have to go back into the camera system.
So, you, I mean, it is recorded then?
It's recording, but it doesn't, I don't think it's like the original red stoplight cameras where if they do run a stoplight, it automatically takes your photo and...
No, no, and I don't mean that, I'm just saying it is, but it's, it's, it's not only true time, it is recorded data.
Yeah.
So, if there had been an accident, you could go back and review it.
Go back and look, yeah.
Okay. Well, having been three times Randy and/or myself come through that intersection and had oncoming semis not stop, I would be a hundred and ten percent behind having a camera at that intersection. And I know there's been other incidences.
Right, I mean, there's been multiple times, there's been accidents where they run the stop sign.
Oh, a lot, and even with our one that, you know, with the medical deal with the semi, you know, that could have been far worse with kids, it's school time.
Oh, my.
So, I mean, I realize it's not live photo, it's, but if it's something that we can go back and just for review.
Because normally, when there is accidents there at the four-way, we're always trying to pick up footage from Alpino's, Bass Auto, or Quick Start, but they don't reach out. The only one that reaches out closest would be the one at Alpino's and get their footage.
And I think when we were doing our, our talks for running for these seats, it was brought up by everybody on the interviews that, you know, something needed to be looked at, at somehow getting safety at that four-way intersection. And if it meant cameras, so.
When was that discussion?
When we were running for these three seats at the town hall with all six, eight, whatever candidates, it was talked about by, I think, everybody that that four-way intersection was so dangerous.
The traffic cameras, would that be under the police department or the city department?
Police, all the cameras are police.
So, this is coming out of Matt's budget.
Make a motion? Yes, I will.
So, I would make a motion to update the motion previously to include the, the traffic four-way intersection cameras.
I'll second that amendment.
And still with...
From, from Wire Pro.
That was Wire Pro.
Okay, everybody clear? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Who say no? Okay, that's carried. Okay, then we'll go on to item nine, review ordinance regarding dog bites and, and large fines. Everybody take a look at that?
So, ordinance six-nine-nine dash twenty-four, if you remember this ordinance, you set your fees for charges back in August of twenty-four. And Lori had requested this to be on the agenda to review again for animals at large and dog bites to change the, consider changing the penalty amount. Right now, animals off leash, hundred bucks? And what's a dog bite?
Yeah, I can find a dog bite.
No, I think it's all under the same.
Is it under the same?
Yeah, all under the same code, fifty-five oh six.
Man, animal at large, so it'd be, it's a hundred bucks, huh?
Yep. And I agree, that's, they need to be raised up. It's just, it's getting out of control, there's too many people that have these dogs and they don't, you know, they just let them roam free. And then when they, we, if we pick them up, like our fee for pickup fee is fifteen dollars. That needs to be jacked up too, I think, too, but...
And buy dog food for that.
Right. And it's, we have a lot of frequent flyers on the dogs that are running loose in here in town. And...
Did, were you able to find those people that had that little fuzzy dog?
Which, there's been multiple fuzzy dogs.
I was talking about last, was it last, was that last?
Was it a brown dog?
Yeah.
One at the four-way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I located him. And knock on wood, we're, so far, we're good, but I spoke to this family until it blew in the face. You know, I can always say, say so much to them and... Well, see, I basically said one more time, or this is it. The dog is gonna be gone. They had another dog that did leave town. They finally, they finally took it to Decorah.
Now, did that other lady, has that been a week now from that other lady, so is she...
That's taken care of.
She lived on?
The dog did.
She left the dog there gone too.
She found a home for it.
Yep.
She's got it kennelled.
She's got it boarded, some, yeah.
And is it going through Ukraine? Maybe that's none of our business.
Don't know yet.
Don't know.
You'll know when you see their certificate.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, and that's, that's kind of hard too, you know, we're requiring that the dog leaves the city limits, but then, you know, how long before I get my end for my other job? You know, that that animal took somebody out again. And I'm not saying that that dog, in that case, was, was out of line, but I just, it's hard, because I've had one in, in Lockon now too, where it was ordered to leave the city limits, but, so it goes out of town a few miles, doesn't correct the dog's problem. It just puts it in a different situation to like somebody different. And I, again, being a dog lover, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to have a good answer for it. And I don't usually blame the animal, but we're just seeing too much of this stuff and they're not being vaccinated and they're not, you know, you only have to, mine get loose once in a while, they jump with the hot wire and... But...
And maybe by increasing the fines, you can prevent...
That happens habitual.
Yeah, preventing to do town happens after, yeah.
Like the dog might be as good as its...
Are we, are we at the point of increasing these fines tonight?
No, you'd have to draft an ordinance for your next meeting.
I can see they're way, all way too low.
So, I would need to know what direction you want for the city attorney.
How high do you want to go?
I do have a question, I don't mean to sound ignorant. Solid waste in public receptacles. What is, what do you mean by solid waste?
It would be garbage.
Oh, like if...
Your garbage removal.
You talk about your garbage in a public dumpster.
Yeah. That's kind of what I thought, but...
How high do you want it to go, folks?
Well, carrying pellet guns and air rifles, we increased to two fifty. I mean, a dog is just as dangerous when it comes to children or whatever.
Well, especially if they have to take an ER visit.
Right.
And that's when I'm getting notified is once they've seen a physician, whether they're in ER or clinical setting.
So, but you can't vote on that tonight?
No, but I need them to...
Give her, give her an idea of where you want it to go.
Need at least set up...
The price.
The price.
Like a, like double everything.
So, double everything to do with the fifty-five code section, is that the section you want doubled or...
That's all the deal with animals.
Right.
Blow by blow, I guess.
Yeah.
Rabies vaccination tag, be a hundred bucks. Animal at large, two hundred bucks. Solid waste removal, a hundred bucks. What's chasing vehicles, the dog?
Yep.
Maybe the dog at large.
I have a question too.
That should be the same as an animal at large.
Maybe it's definitely because he's getting into traffic and it poses problems with the traffic. If he's not just at large.
If, if, like, let's say there's some people that come to the park and they let their dog run, that would be...
That's at large.
I suppose it's in the code.
Yeah, I suppose.
No, because we don't have enough...
Are you, are you making these changes, Darcey?
Yeah, I am, as you talk.
Hundred.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Animal at large, two hundred.
Yep.
Uh, waste removal, a hundred.
Okay.
Chasing vehicles?
Yep. Hundred?
Two hundred instead of large.
Okay, you want that two hundred?
Where's the animal? Two hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe that's be a hundred instead of large.
Okay.
Be a hundred. Animal trap.
What's that?
Not allowed to do that.
Explain that one, would you?
Live trap or foot trap, paw trap?
That's, uh, let me see. Yeah, I'm assuming that's like a foothold or counter, because I don't think it's a live trap.
It's not a live trap.
Yeah.
Something that causes, causes a lot of pain.
And then, yeah, I'm assuming that's for...
Make it a hundred.
Lethal trap.
Yeah.
Living in public, a hundred. If you're in the street or alley, a hundred.
We were just gonna do fifty-five.
We're just doing the, we're just doing the dog section.
Because we're talking about dogs.
Yeah, we're not doing the whole. Yeah.
Two hundred?
Two hundred there.
But is that just if they're not supervised, or you connect a dog off leash to run around and then...
No, dog's gotta be at leash. Yeah, at all times. Unless you make a dog park somewhere in town.
That rabies vaccination tag, you know, that's a state code even, that's, you know, that's required by the...
Right, this, the first one.
Top one.
Yeah, and rabies vaccination.
Rabies.
Maybe it needs to be a notice in the paper about penalty for not having, you know, people just aren't informed.
So, that's, that's not us being hardcore on anybody, that's a state law.
I, I know the dog pickup fee is not on there, I think that's just a general one.
So, what do you want that to be, so we can...
Right now, it's at fifteen. I, I think it needs to be fifty.
Are you getting paid?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're getting paid, but they're not licensed.
Fifty per day?
It's, right now, it's, it's fifteen for pickup. No, it's fifteen, but then it's ten dollars a day for like feeding and water.
So, fifty pickup?
Fifty for the pickup.
What do you want a day? Twenty-five a day?
Yeah.
So, what do dog bites come under? Because it says here, we have a discussion on animals at large and dog bites fines.
Yeah, so that would still be chapter fifty-five, all of animals.
Just double, whenever we find that, just double that. Double even triple.
What's a dog bite?
Well, it's not written here. I was just saying, it's probably somewhere in section fifty-five.
It'd be under the fifty-five, the vicious.
Right.
So, that should maybe be triple.
Was that one at large?
Well, it's not here.
For dog bites?
For dog bites or vicious animals, that should maybe be tripled.
So, what about, say, dog running at large? First time is two hundred, then you pick the dog up, you're saying you want to double it, so... So, next time, same dog, it's picked up, say, the following week, you're gonna go two hundred, you're gonna go four hundred? Each, I say each time it should go up. Right.
And this would change this, not to be two thousand, being that we doubled it, you can't...
Well, you can't afford to have a bad dog, can you?
I don't, that's up to you guys, I guess, but...
I think you're right, though. Otherwise, they'll never change, they'll never change their ways if it doesn't hurt their pocketbook.
They just don't want to see a bunch of dogs getting dumped out in the country.
Right.
That's the other thing too, you gotta worry about is...
Leave it at two hundred and just stay there.
Yeah. If you pay it enough times, you're gonna get her.
Right.
Then do we have to change this, that each day that the violation is for all? Have to repeat offense or first offense, second offense?
That's, that's, that's code, that's, I have a code.
What's that? No, yeah, that's why we just, what do you...
We'll change that.
We have more dogs, but it could be twenty-five bucks a day.
I think we just talked about that, it'd be fifty for the pickup and twenty-five for the day.
Okay, if we landed, that's okay with me.
Not said heated, heated pool, or is it all outdoor?
No, it's all, it's heated. It's inside.
Okay. Where is it?
But it's by the waste treatment plant.
Waste treatment plant, it's, we got two kennels inside.
Okay, so I'll have the city attorney draft that then for your review at the next meeting.
Very good.
Okay, I have a question about this, I know we're not talking about, I mean, we're talking about the dogs, like placing debris on public street or alley, then like when people put refrigerators and...
Could be anything like that, yeah.
Right up on Tilden, is that the main drive that comes straight across the four-way? Is that Tilden?
Tilden east or west?
East. Past masses, right?
Yeah.
At the whole furniture? Okay, there's some, so, a refrigerator and a stove and sitting on it on the...
Okay.
Side of the street.
Um, where at?
It's, uh...
East Tilden? East Tilden?
West Tilden.
Yeah. It's actually the second, it's past, uh, past Summer Street, isn't it? I know exactly what the house is, but I don't want to say it out.
It might have got picked up today.
It was there when I came tonight.
Okay, we'll serve it.
Well, they'll get served.
Are they waiting for the hayman or what?
Hay buddy.
Hay buddy.
He went through Clermont already, so he'll be back tomorrow.
Well, sure, have some, because it's called Dog Holding House.
What is it?
Holding House, yeah. As I said, they don't have to wait for, for Buddy, they can pull, come from there.
Yeah, that's right. Hay buddy, I don't know if hay buddy ever empties his truck.
Yeah, he hides it around town.
All right, we're done with that one?
Yeah.
No, I'm just gonna draft it for you.
Yeah, no, we, we...
We already did the moving.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's go on to item ten, then housing code procedures review.
All right, so you had a draft in your packet from the city attorney regarding housing code plans of inspection. And tonight is just for your review. If you have any changes or recommendations of what you want changed. I did already see a spelling issue, you had Marion Housing Code. But I just, I'm wondering if this is what you envisioned and if we're on the right path here after last month's meeting.
I think when the board brought it up, it said that maybe not have a fee to register because people may not register to pay for it. And this said there'd be a registration fee.
No, opposite.
Opposite.
They have, by council, there's no violation, they don't.
Right, right now, they don't cha, we don't charge to register.
Oh, but they do register? No.
After we chase it down.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this, this now, it makes it have a fee.
Yeah.
And you have to have a landlord license.
Yeah, so, when I, well, first of all, I was, I was very impressed.
Okay.
So, I see here, they divided it between registering to unit as a rental unit.
Yeah.
And then getting a landlord license. So, the registering is really good. So, the registering is really good, so it would be, um, whatever, forty dollars per unit to register, right? And then, let's say he doesn't, um, then, then there's that, um, really, um, the hefty fine of a hundred dollars, right? That's added, okay? But the landlord license fee, what I noticed at the top was, so he has to, just for himself, not per unit. So his fee would be fifty dollars, okay? But then there's no violation, though, if he doesn't do that. Um, what I saw is if, if the, if the licensed landlord doesn't register, so it's forty than a hundred. But if he fails to get licensed, then I think we have to add in there that it should be the same fee of the five hundred as if his license had been suspended or revoked. So if we find out, but let's say he is registering the units, but he doesn't have that landlord license. Um, then I think we should go with B, which is in, in that, um, table nine.
Okay.
As if it was being suspended or like the reinstatement fee. Because then there's no, there's no, uh, incentive basically, vibration to avoid. And then I think, and we could write there that the five hundred dollars, like the, that same reinstatement fee, um, but we could still give them a grace period, just like we did over here about, um. Says over here, this fee may be waived if the property is registered as a rental within the time allotted by the housing official. I think we can do the same thing, you know, it's like fifty dollars for the landlord license fee, and if they fail to do that and we find out, then it is the five hundred dollar fee, but, you know, we, we can give them a time allotted, whatever it is. You know, fifteen days, thirty days, whatever. I guess that was the only thing I noticed, that there was no violation fee.
All right, did everybody hear what the, the Boris commented on that?
Yeah, I think you're right. If you don't, if there's not any repercussions for not doing it, then they're not gonna do it.
And then do we have to have any special, um, line items for all of that revenue?
Some light ones.
That this would generate?
We already do.
Do you?
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, we have a housing code, uh, receipt when Dave goes out and inspects and we collect, yeah.
Is that an additional fee will be assessed on the property of, um, the licensed landlord, renter, he's your landlord, so we have done, be.
Is that the same thing that's.
That's the same, that's the consequences now, but she's saying if they don't register.
No, not registered, that, that landlord license fee.
Yeah, if they don't get that.
Right.
So right now it's if it's suspended or revoked, but she's saying if they don't get it at all, there needs to be.
Right.
A five hundred dollar fee.
Because I was looking at if they're licensed and they do the hundred dollar fine if they don't register.
To me, the fifty dollars is pretty, pretty reasonable for a landlord to register.
Yeah.
Himself.
Yeah.
It's, but then if you don't, then to hammer on the five hundred dollars, I think that, wake up and, you know.
And we can give them, you know, we can give them like a, within the time allotted, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
For whatever reason, like a bit of that. And then I have another question, on the confirmed complaint inspection fees, so who, who is paying that? Is that, because it says if no violation is found, the complaint is considered unconfirmed and no fee is assessed, right?
Right.
Who, who is paying for that inspection that no violation was found?
That would be the person that complained, that's the way the code reads now.
Yeah, except, except we crossed it out over here.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring up.
Okay, so I need to make a note.
Be uncrossed out.
Yeah, things that they cross out.
If somebody complained and they, and spread the unconfirmed, and then they would be, right.
Yeah, so, but we cross that out, but I think we have to put that back, so that we do give some protection to the landlords as well, if they're going to.
They're not gonna say something's wrong.
Right, just for that. And then the passing inspection form, that's in essence like a certificate of occupancy.
Right.
And will we have that list available of those inspectors again?
Um.
Or we're just saying that they have to.
We're just saying they have to, because Dan talked to me about that, and we didn't want to show, like, we were trying to gear, you know, steer somebody to business, because that's not what we're doing. But they have to ma- find someone that is licensed and certified based on what the code says.
So we can provide a listing.
Sure, we could, yeah.
And then I had one more, one more question that I, unless I just wasn't reading it, so. In, um, in section three, under regular inspections, right? So basically, every rental unit is gonna have to have a, a regular inspection every two years, okay? So if somebody moves out of their home or changes from owner to rental status, then they have to do the first one within three months, right? And then every two years.
Mm-hmm.
And then if it's a new construction, a completely new rental unit, they have, again, within three months and two years. But my question is, what is the frequency for the current rental status ones? The ones that, like now when they're gonna come in and register, all these people, they are rental units right now, it's not a new construction, and it's not changing status. So I think we have to be clear on the frequency of that as well, that that should also be, the first one should be within, um, well, it was six months of conversion, sorry, from owner to whatever. So, whatever everybody else thinks, like either within three months or six months, and then again to join that frequency every two years. But that's the only status that I saw missing, is the ones that are currently.
Okay.
So once they, once they get a license to be a landlord.
And they register.
A unit, yeah, and then they should have three months probably to get that.
Right, so it should be like within three months of registering the unit regardless of status.
Okay.
Or current rentals. Because that would be a good loophole, they would say it's not new construction and we haven't changed from owner to rental.
Yeah.
Also, there's just something missing in the section over there, and contracts, it just says, see, a state that's set from the ground below, whatever.
Oh, probably because he, yeah.
Whatever, that's just, you caught Marion, then.
Yeah.
Right, anything else, Devora?
Is that not enough?
Pretty good.
I think you wrote it very well.
Okay, so we're on the right track now, okay.
You did a good job, too, in taking that.
Um, I mean, I think it's, it's very good, and, and I think also in the, it says like, um, for the confirmed complaint, I think that also will have us working and partnering together with the public. Um, you know, uh, maybe educating in different languages, the tenants, like what is a housing code violation, telling them to keep written proof of maintenance request. I think that's also a good way for us to, I don't know, speak to some of the city leaders, not government leaders, but, you know, the, the people who are here before talking. And we can work with them, about getting, getting the public educated, this is what's called a violation in different languages, and, you know, you should keep written proof of your maintenance requests. So if they don't fulfill it, you can come and complain, you know? So I think it's, I think it's very good, I think it's a very good.
Okay, so I will, um, have Dan make those changes, and then my other question was, are you thinking that you should notify landlords and have them come to a meeting, or?
Probably wouldn't hurt just to let them know, maybe so they understand, they can ask questions and.
Once you've adopted.
Right.
Understand that this is coming down the pipe. You know, just like a fair notification. This is gonna be happening. What's that?
They're just gonna come yell at you.
Nothing that hasn't happened before.
Right.
Well, we can handle, you know, it kind of goes, the shoe goes back to the other foot, though, if this wasn't a problem, we wouldn't be doing this.
Great.
Okay, I will make those changes.
Okay, she'll get a hold of Dan and get that changed down, anything else? And that one? All right, let's go to item eleven then.
So we did, pretty much did both of those.
We did.
Yeah, I should have probably made them one.
Sure did, yeah, we did, yeah, yeah. Okay, twelve then. Zoning, zoning annexation, planning and zoning recommendations, see public hearing from ten thirteen five.
All right, so, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on your request, and they're giving a recommendation to you to, um, zone the acres of Ziggler, which are north of the limits there. To a C two, which would be a highway commercial, and so your next step would be to draft that in an ordinance and set that by public hearing, because you're adding that onto your zoning maps and to your zoning ordinance. So I would just need a motion to set that at your next regular scheduled meeting.
I move that we set that, the public hearing for the zoning annexation for Ziggler. Awesome.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Who said no, let's carry. Okay, item thirteen then is financial audit bid for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So, um, I sent out for a bid for our financial audit, three-year contract for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and I received a no quote back from the state of Iowa. I gave you a list of who I sent it all to, and the only other responses are current auditor, which is O'Connor Brooks. So kind of hard to come by to find financial auditors.
State of Iowa wouldn't do it?
No.
Why?
They don't have time.
No.
I think they concentrate more on the smaller cities that are in the pools. So cities two thousand and more are audited every year, cities under that go into a pool, you pay to be into a pool, and then they pull out so many each year that has to be audited. And it might not be your current year you're in, it could be a years, it could be five years ago, then they come in, pull the records off the books. So it's different on how they do it, so I think the state concentrates more on those smaller cities because of the pools requirements that are new.
Because that would give them the, what, you know, they're too busy because they've got so many small.
Yeah, I think they, I, I mean, I think if we were desperate and begged them, they probably would come in, like if you had nobody, but usually a state is.
So O'Connor Brooks has had ours before.
Yeah, they've. Did our, I want to say, these last three years, we've been with O'Connor Brooks, the three years before that, we were with, uh, Luann Murphy, or Rachel Thompson, that's who, and that, she no longer, she got out. And then before her was O'Connor Brooks again, so we've been. Yeah, we've been with these guys for a while.
And then this letter from Hacker Nelson is just kind of in support of.
Of O'Connor Brooks, yeah.
Were they one of them that didn't jump in?
They're a no quote to us, they have quite a few cities around.
They do.
They're just kind of saying, hey, people, O'Connor Brooks, and we're busy or something.
Yeah.
So, so, the fiscal year ending next year, twenty twenty-six, is gonna cost us twenty-six thousand and six hundred dollars within the audit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this current year, well, they'll be coming here, as a matter of fact, they just reached out to me, they should be coming within the next month. I think our bid for this last year is over twenty-one thousand, like twenty-one thousand five hundred.
They'll both just get murdered.
Yep.
Yeah, it's crazy.
The bad audit.
Only I wanted a choice.
No, we didn't, so.
I move to read, accept the, uh, audit, auditing bid from O'Connor Brooks for the next three years.
All right, a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Not all of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And who said no? Here it is. Takes us to item fourteen, the consent agenda. It's in there that you guys want to talk about.
Uh, yeah, I did. Oh, the curb cut.
Okay.
Yeah.
On, um.
Two nineteen oak.
It's actually a cut on Mouse Street.
Right.
I couldn't figure out the list if I didn't have the address.
It's on the corner of Lowell and Oak.
Oh, yeah, but this one says one oh eight Cheryl curb cut request, one oh eight. I think the one, um, one might, um.
That was last month.
Yeah, that was last month.
Yeah, so, you see where I, am I talking about the same thing? Number E in there.
Are, are you looking in our old, uh, in last month's, uh, minutes?
That's what the heck.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong thing I found.
It was a long week, I thought maybe I said something out wrong.
Yeah, I think that, I think that curb cut is gonna be good.
It's a house, is this house with the stucco?
Yes, yes.
I don't like the car of that. Yeah.
And there's others, the cement parking. Well, not just cement parking, it's not, it's not a garage over there.
At the Oak Drive one?
Right.
They, they have a park, um, between my property and that garage, this white car is sat over the entire, whoever's building there, I don't know how many people are living. There's several cars that come in and out, but are they allowed to park it there?
And that, by that garage, is this, is it not licensed on it? Have you explained it?
Are they parked in the garage, or they parked in the, parked in the lawn?
The garage isn't big enough to park a car.
But I think that a curb cut would be good, because otherwise they'll be parking on the front of it. Be on the side across from, be on.
From the side of the garage.
It's on the wall, so.
If they follow that cement parking, that'll get them off the lawn, off the lawn.
And that's, it's all there.
They appear?
It doesn't bother my lawn so much, it's just this, it's there.
Are they to the east of the garage?
Yes, it's that white car.
Yeah.
And it's sat, it's just the whole.
The curb cut's gonna be to the west of.
Yes, it is, yeah, yeah.
So they're, they jumped, is there, is there a curb there, or are they getting their car apart and just parking there?
They drive off on the garage.
Oh, then.
And then they're all parking, is it, they'll legal the park a long way? I noticed that a lot, too, this parking, hanging along.
I gotta tip it for that.
I don't know.
It had just been, it had just been, uh, leased again, I don't know who's living there now.
There's one that was, that moved across the street.
Yeah, I had a question. Cut, cut all that brushy trees, got done, and put it inside.
Yeah. So it is, it is laid out, right, how they want to get it done? Or they want to do it?
Yeah. That's a Tuesday.
It was a Friday, just second one.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, because what they're gonna do with that curb cut, it's on the, it's on the west side of that garage, so they're gonna go, and then they're gonna concrete areas for, to park. So, yeah, I mean, it should, should get it, get them all off the road, so.
I have.
Off the road and off. Can't have everybody just parking up on the lawn everywhere.
There, all of that.
I wonder if we have to bring the consent agenda.
Okay.
Is there an ordinance that prevents that?
Only if it's on the boulevard.
One of it's on the boulevard?
No.
I got a twenty sixteen.
Okay, so that's, that's. So then that Monday, did he work that weekend?
Nope, he started him following weekends.
So August.
August eighteen, or August twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
What are you guys looking at?
Looking at when CJ's raise would go into effect, and he's saying August twenty-fifth, he graduated on the twenty-second, didn't work the weekend, so the twenty-fifth paid.
Okay, all right.
Okay, need approval on that thing?
Well, so, yeah, we've already got a motion to approve the consent agenda.
What's the motion, I'm sorry?
Becky. Is there a second? Larry? Any further discussion? Not all of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Who said no? Carry, all right, that takes us down to item fifteen, a resolution for money to pay the bills. Motion for that. Lori, second? Devora, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, passes, thank you. Other comment again, anybody something to say?
My name is Norma Sandra, and I was glad to see that you guys did something about the dog fights, because a month ago, I was walking down the park, and I had the dog chirrup out of the bottom of the park there. And, um, circling, barking, barking and all that, and it ended up biting me in the back of the leg, not bad, um, no stitches or anything, but it did break the skin. And also it was a Saturday, so I had to go to the ER. It was no big deal, I mean, we just cleaned it up and, and took care of it, not a question.
Was there a person left?
But you did go to the ER.
Or.
You did go to the ER, ER.
The ER, they took a picture of it and cleaned it up for me, and I have a picture of it, too, I did that, I have that.
Straighten it out.
Yeah, well.
Yeah. That's one of the ones we've been working on, yeah.
The dog was loose, the dog was loose, she was having a leash.
This is a, is it?
This is one of them having trouble with Iowa City, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the girl that was supposed to be in control is a student.
Some, one time I saw this man with his dog and him, it was running ahead of him, I said, your dog should be on a leash, he said, he's okay, I said, it's against the law, and he looked at me like, that's really it, I mean, they don't care.
No.
But I always hate to think calling nine one one because there's a dog in the park, but I guess I should.
Well.
All the non-emergency lines. All the non-emergency lines.
I meant that, yeah, I, I meant that. I would recall nine-one-one for that.
Anyway, I was glad to hear this, and yeah, it was, I felt kind of funny about going to the ER, but the dog did break the skin and it broke the leash, so I did go over. And on, on my own, and I had to get a tissue shot because I had an infection. The other thing I'd like to bring up here is, I know it's early, but something about Christmas that we could do or get something going, like, I, I just came in and I get on my regular, I have green settings, okay, so, if you want a little beam or a target in a storehouse, decorating, and lights or something, we'll do it. Just, I don't know how I would go about doing the stores, should I go into each one and do each one?
Yeah, I'd do that. You want to volunteer to do that?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'll go to the stores and see if they would kind of light it up.
That's it.
This makes the person feel better when they come into the town, and look at how nice they get. Because I was on a, we used to do that one.
Well, and then point set is isn't one religion or another either, or something that's very generic.
Yeah, I would think it would be.
Because they're associated. They're associated.
Well, it.
Yeah, but not every, people, maybe I'm saying the Christian would have a point set.
Devora, would a point set be against?
Offensive?
No, no, not at all, okay.
We're trying to think of something generic that would.
A point set I thought would be, everybody could. It's a flower, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a wrong business. Yeah, yeah, it's, well, you have to look at it too, that's the plant itself grows particularly for that kind of year. It's like your Christmas.
Talking of growing.
But then.
It can't grow, so.
Yeah, but you could even use our official, our official.
We got them all covered.
We still shop at Walmart. Anyway, that's all.
All right.
I like it, all right.
That's a good idea.
Thanks, Norma. Anybody else?
So, to tell you guys about a library program.
I was going to say, this was.
Well, I wasn't going to, but I remembered that we, I should probably advertise this. So, this Wednesday, we have a program at the library, um, at one o'clock called Final Arrangements, and it's to get your affairs in order, uh, for your family. So, it says sixty-plus age on the flyer, but I asked ISU Extension, and they said there's no age limit. You can be under sixty to, to show up, it's free. Freedom Bank and Fidelity Bank are sponsoring it, so anybody who comes is going to be free. And, yeah, just going over what you need to have in order, and personally, two months after I got married, my husband's father passed away and had nothing in order. And so, instead of going on a honeymoon, we cleared out his house, I had to make all the phone calls. Luckily, I wasn't the one grieving, but I had to stay on the phone twenty times, like, oh, why are you canceling the service? Oh, because he's dead, and, and it's awful to do as someone grieving, so. Getting things in order really helps your family, and it's at the library, this Wednesday, the tenth, one o'clock. Uh, if you could call us or email us, and we just put you on the list, but that's it.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
You're doing the work, Dan.
Anybody else? All right.
Would we zoom for some?
Yeah.
Chris, if something like that have a, I mean, we don't have a, have your right now, does something like that put in the paper?
It was.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, the result of the meeting.
Um, yeah, we are in between people right now, so I don't think they'll have anyone to send. We're in between reporters as far as I know, so I don't think they would have anyone to send, but.
All right, thank you. I haven't got any comments, council, you guys got anything, or do I?
This here, I got this one here on this pass around. How do they make this, Boo Boo are giving us too much money?
Oh, that's, I'll let you talk about that.
I'll talk about that, I got this, yeah, this little, yes, that's.
Person begging for mercy.
Yeah.
So, it's like, so this is Fidelity Bank, and this is from the Fred and Holger Miller Estate.
I don't think he's, I don't think. I didn't see that pass before you, right?
And, uh, originally, they bequeathed money to the hospital. Whereas when the hospital went closed, then, uh, that went to the city. So, um, yeah, then Darcy showed me this note, you know, from this lady, and, uh, well, I said, let's set up a, a meeting with this lady, which we did, and I think it was last Friday maybe or something. And I was just over the phone, but so, um, what, what this is all about is they overpaid us. You know, and all we, all we get is the interest money, the, uh, the principal stays in there, and of course, you've got, uh, management fees and all of this that gets paid way before we do. And, uh, so one of our questions was, well, what, how much is the principal? Hundred and eight? Hundred and eight thousand. And I said, Darcy, can you tell me what we've been paid in the past? And it was like, I mean, it was penis, you know, sometimes, you know, a little bit over a hundred dollars, and then I said, well, by God, if you got something like that at a hundred and eight thousand dollars principal, I mean, I couldn't screw up this account that bad and not get paid, that's terrible. What we were getting was terrible. So evidently, in the last couple of years, we saw an increase, you know, thinking that probably now they finally come to where they need to be, you know, and paid us what we should be getting? Well, no, it was overpayment. It was overpayment, so with, the overpayment was what, Lori?
Eight thousand, five hundred, four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Yeah, so, at the rate we were getting paid, we won't see a dime for a while. The hell of it is, what we were getting, we were giving to the ambulance. So, Darcy, they were sitting there, and I said, okay, how about this for a suggestion? That you make a donation to our ambulance. You know, if we're, if we, if we're not, we're not going to see a payment for a long time.
Make a donation to what?
The ambulance, that's where it was going, that's where we were putting that money.
To me, this is mismanagement of the whole trust thing.
Oh, oh, badly.
Turned over the, over to legal.
Badly.
The difference, and we should pull our money out of there.
We can't, Larry, can't. Can't, you can't, you can't.
So, how can you get a better return than what they're paying us?
Hopefully, this is a new management firm, maybe we'll get it now. I, I, I know the history on this quite a bit. You know, and how, of course, it started with Citizens Bank, you know, when Citizens was here. And then when they sold all of this, all of these got turned over to Fidelity, and, um, I mean, I'm not going to go into what I know, uh, because I know that it was mismanaged, terrible. And like I said, at, at that amount of, of principal, we should have been paid way better than that.
What percent were you supposed to be getting?
Exactly, we don't know. We, we, we don't know. But you, can you figure it out, figure it out? You know, if you got a hundred and eight thousand dollar principal and you're getting paid a little over a hundred?
I think it was four percent, you should be getting four grand a year, right, roughly? So, that sounds.
Yeah.
Have you seen the will, like, does it say in the, the whatever, the will?
What?
Of these people, like?
I, I saw it years ago, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm Kevin, I was on the church council when, see, when all of this came together. But, um, like I said, I can't, I'm in a public meeting, and I'm not going to go that far with this. But I'm just, we're just saying that this is where this one is, you know, so, yeah. So, we'll see, you haven't heard anything, or? So, we're not going to hold our breath on any. Legal can't do anything with that, Larry.
They can't, uh, you don't have the mismanagement of that trust, somebody in charge of that trust is, uh, given the responsibility to oversee it, and they can just, they could have said zero.
Sure did, when we were getting close to zero.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, none of this is right, is that, it's not right, but.
They should have fiduciary responsibility to the trust.
Absoluteship, yes.
So, where did that go, where did that go, out the window? That's where I think you have legal grounds to pursue it.
Well, we can ask the lawyer. We ask them every day something, so we can ask them this one. Yes.
That would be a big shot in there for the ambulance.
Well.
Anybody.
Anybody, I mean, you can't, you, like I said, you, how do you screw up an account that bad? You know, I mean, it's like, we, we, we don't even know it's here, kind of, sort of, you know?
For that one, I mean, we get audited, they get audited. The banks have auditors.
Yeah.
Pretty bad auditing firm too.
So, when, and I'm sure they got their management fee. So, anyway, that, okay, um, so that's that, so we got a request in for some money, you know, we'll see. That, that sucks, but that's it. No, I know it, I know it. But we'll, we'll ask the lawyer. Okay, any other comments you get? Not as a motion to adjourn? Larry, second? Devora, Devora, I heard her. All those in favor say aye? Who said no? Carrie, thank you, everybody.